...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Mayor Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Mayor Moore is out for tonight. Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's presentation of petitions, communications, and notices and general questions period for members of the community. Welcome all of you, I appreciate you coming tonight. Does anyone have anything to say? Thank you. Report from Mike, he's not here this evening. He had a planned board meeting and we're all just about done, so okay. With the change of our meeting, we do have some conflicts here. Report from the mayor, since I'm standing in for Jeff, I'll go now. First, we'd like to express our condolences to Jeff and his family for the loss of his father this past week, Stanley Moore. Our prayers are with all of you. And also to Woody Kissel and his family, he lost his father-in-law this weekend. So to Woody and Beth and their family, our condolences as well, go with you. We have a couple things happening. We're going to have a cellphone drop here at the village office. All your old cellphones, we will be taking through November 16th, and this is on behalf of the Secure the Call Foundation. And you can check out their website at www.donatemyselfphone.org. They take these phones back in and they hand them out as free emergency 911 phone calls. So these telephones are programmed only for 911, but it gives them the option to have an emergency access to that. So it's a really great cause, and for all of you who change your phones, you can drop them up here and they'll refurbish them, so we don't have to go down to Plattsburgh. So you can just bring them in here to the village office where we're open, and we'll have a box here for you to drop them off. Second is pickup days for all of us who've been working in our yards, it's coming. October 29th, Monday, October 29th will be the first day, and the second one will be November 5th for pickup days. Reminder that this is for lawn raking and general yard debris, and it is to be in clear bags, no black bags or it won't be picked up. And it needs to be put at your curb side by 7:00 a.m. for the village crew to pick it up. Changes that'll be taking place for the spring as opposed to the fall. We used to have three-inch diameter, and we will still pick that up if you have it out by your curb now, because we have not given proper notice to all of you for that. But beginning in the spring, we will only pick up one-inch diameter. Anything larger than that, you need to cut and keep for firewood for yourself, or give it to a neighbor, or just put the word out that you've got wood. I'm sure you'll have plenty of people coming to pick it up for you. So this year, we will continue to pick up till three inches, but for the spring, it will definitely be changed and it'll be permanent at that point as a one-inch diameter on that. If you would all please be aware of that. Okay? And there'll be only one pickup per house. So if you see them there and you quick, you know, cut everything down and have new pile by the end of the day, you'll have to wait for the second pickup, they're not going back for a second round. Okay, thank you. And one more item, our meeting next month also will be changed, and that will be Monday, November 19th, because on Monday, November 12th, again, it is another holiday, Veterans' Day, so we have to move it to the 19th. All right, that is that for announcements. Last month, I met with Mr. Turner, the school superintendent for Northeastern, very nice gentleman. And I talked about the property for the skate park as we had discussed, and I do have the letter in there for those of you to sign that haven't signed it yet in support of a skate park, if you're interested in signing that, otherwise we'll just write a separate letter. It's one of the requirements for the grant, to get public officials, business owners, et cetera, in writing letters to support, and the state police are writing one, because obviously they've seen a lot of all the happenings around town with the kids that don't have things to do. And Mr. Turner seemed very receptive for donating the land so that we could put the skate park there. There's two spots on the property that would be perfect, one is the tennis courts, which are getting to be in very sad shape. I would like to avoid doing that, because you know, it is fun to keep using those tennis courts regardless of the cracks. But he seemed very receptive to leaving the land, that would have to be voted upon, obviously, by the school board, so we just need consensus, which we'll discuss under new business, as to whether we want to proceed with that. Let's see, what else? Halloween decorating contest. Judging will be done the 28th through the 30th, so please make sure that Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday that you have your lights on, so when the judges go by, we can see all your beautiful displays. And I would also like to call an executive session at the end of our meeting to discuss some personnel issues. Any questions? Okay.
The only thing I have is Greg and I had a teleconference last week with Pat Johnson from the Public Service Commission regarding the Time Warner Cable contract. We had a little good session with her, we talked with her for about an hour, told us things that we needed to be looking for, things that we could ask for in our contract. So I made a phone call today to Time Warner Cable, to Tom, I'm not going to pronounce this right, Delany, and we're going to set up a teleconference with him for next week, because he's out of Syracuse, and possibly have a face-to-face with him in November. But if we can do it over the phone, we will, and get everything answered that we need. So that's moving along quite well, and I would think that maybe by the end of the year, January the latest, we should probably have that contract ready for signature.
Thank you. Greg?
Just to reiterate what Kim just said about Time Warner, I went to a board meeting, and Ms. Johnson from the Public Service Commission came up and talked to the town board, and it was pretty much what Kim and I had talked around the phone, so it worked out better for us, I guess. Shared services meeting is, we're moving a little bit slowly, but progress is being made, we have a better understanding of some of the requirements that we will have to undertake for future progress. One of the things I thought was very interesting is, we're going to have a public service or a public information meeting here with the New York State Department of Transportation regarding the proposed maintenance project on the Route 9 Bridge. It's on October 25th at 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. here in the village offices, and anyone with concerns in the village, it is recommended, or I would recommend, that you attend this meeting, because there's going to be talk of a, perhaps a temporary bridge with off-site detour. You're talking about local traffic having to be detoured, school buses and things of that nature having to be detoured, and if there's any special needs that need to be addressed by the New York State Department of Transportation, this would be an opportunity for you to bring those concerns to their attention so that they may address them. I would like to congratulate Ian and the Public Works Crew on getting the belt filter press ready to move into the wastewater treatment plant. It's ready to install, I understand, and make operational, and I think the village is going to see a significant cost savings once this is, once this belt filter press is up and operating in the wastewater treatment plant. I guess just a public service, not a public service, I encourage the village residents to get their flu shots. Very important in terms of prevention. That's all.
Thank you, Greg. Steve?
Just a couple things, there hasn't been any activity on the planning board, it's one of my responsibilities, but there's no activity there. I'd like to congratulate Ian on the acquisition of the belt press and his successful trip down and back. Sometimes those things can be eventful, and obviously it wasn't, so that's a good thing. And I'm also interested in the school property as well, because I think that's something that we can effectively utilize for village residents. And also, I'd like to extend my condolences to Jeff and his family as well, along with his family. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All righty. Report from the clerk treasurer.
Everybody's been copied with the expenditures and revenue report for October. We have done a water and sewer billing. Our water is $55,852.09, and sewer was billed at $82,938.77.
Any questions?
How does that stand with our projections?
Actually, we're very close. I think we're actually a little bit over.
So we're ahead a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
Both water answers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We also have a purchase requisition?
For green lane meter, it's testing electrode in the moors and pumps for the sewer plant, in the amount of 116.19, come out of G, 8130.2.
Can I have a motion to accept the purchase requisition?
Do not make a motion.
Second.
Okay, and discussion? Ian?
Yes?
Down at the wastewater plant, just something that we're replacing, an old piece of equipment here?
No, it's a tool pre-. It's a way to electronically test moors and pumps and stuff like that, without getting too deeply involved with disassembling the unit, taking it out of there, testing, bench testing, et cetera, to test its moors and pumps.
Testing it for how much longer the operation will last?
Current, if it has a, if it's running slow, if it has bad current, items like that, it's electrical, an electrical tester.
Okay, so this is something new that we've never had before?
Correct.
And it's necessary?
Yes.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Got it? Just jump on me if I miss things here. Okay, presentation of the warrant and payment. Can I have a motion to accept the warrant?
Sure.
Second. Individually?
We have a discussion.
In discussion, thank you. Any discussion?
I just have one, the meters are all exchanged the way we want. The last month, the water meters, we didn't get the right one.
Yes.
Where I see another $4,400 in here this month.
Well, what happened with that is, the ones we originally ordered, they came, and they came with a meter pit, like what mobile homes have, with that attachment, so it could be read from a meter pit.
Okay.
Larry called the company back and actually saved us, got us money, renegotiated the fact that we had ordered the ones, the right ones for the village, and we got a different kind than what we had anticipated.
Right, right.
And in return, they actually sent us the correct meters that we need for our village at Long Shark, so we got all those, plus we have to keep them. So actually, he's pretty well at that. He actually done us save money, he's pretty creative when it comes to that.
That's actually the same bill that was tabled last time, you know, we got it repaired.
Okay. Twice, twice. But they, we do have the right components now.
Okay, thank you.
What's that one?
Ian, under the, under the first page, on the first page of General Fund, do you okay this? I mean, I see a $414 charge here for seed and boots, I mean, you, do you okay those charges?
Well, that, the $414 is, that's two different individuals purchasing boots and feet that we have used, grass seed that we've used on the riverbank.
Okay, I guess my question is, does the village not have a vendor that we purchase boots from?
We have a, a, I don't want to say a purchase agreement, we go to that individual's store by, we have in the past with that store, buy boots, as well as Farm &amp; Family, however, Farm &amp; Family, too, I don't know.
No?
They're downsizing and they don't have.
They're keeping the clothing and boots.
Well, they only have what they have in stock.
They're going out of business with the clothing or their boots, that's staying.
I don't know, there's something.
But the rest is going.
That's why they went to Du Bois.
Okay.
They have, we have an account there, they have boots, we were there, picked up some seed, so.
Well, they're allotted $125 on boots, is that what it is, $125?
The old contracts prior to the union contract, correct me if I'm wrong, please, was a hundred dollars, allowance of a hundred dollars for boots. And I believe sometime through the transition from the way it was to the new contract through the union, that's not very clearly stated in there, the dollar amount is not stated, so it's ambiguous.
So how much was spent on boots, two pair of boots?
Maybe $132 each, if I'm not mistaken. Grassy is very expensive.
Yeah, grass, yeah, they, it was $132 for the seed, Jimmy's boots were $147.50, and Larry's $134.50.
Jimmy's feet are bigger as well.
Okay, but if we had an allotment of $100 for boots, why are we paying that full amount?
That's the catch.
If it was not stipulated in the new contract?
That's the catch.
Anything different?
It's different, Ian, you can't take what may have been in the personal contract compared to the new contract.
But we don't have it stated in the union contract to down our amount.
That's the catch.
So is that something we should correct, or?
We stand probably for three years.
But I believe Larry has spoke with Ian regarding what amount is going to be allowed.
Thank you. I have another, just one more, put one here. Can you tell me what? I'm sure the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
Which page?
I'm on Sewer Fund, first page of the Sewer Fund. The latency of program fee, $1,875.
That's a fee we have to pay every year, as a regulation, regular annual work fee. That's every year, yeah, that's your. All those questions we had a bunch of time to do now. Those ones you can't do nothing about.
So it's an annual?
Yes.
Annual fee?
Okay, any other questions? Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
All right. Report from the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Let's say thank you for your compliments on the belt press. I'd also like to thank my guys, and this is a reference to a couple correspondents, which I'm sure will be read out loud later. Correspondent six, it's the Champaign Fire District, they helped me do it, their driveway was, it was pretty bad, so they helped us pay that, and that was something the guys helped me work through. I'd also like to thank them for, an old Navy term, they turn tube, is what we call it, but they really stepped up to the plate and helped out, the DEC, no, not the DEC, the USDA guys, and they got a letter of thanks in here, and I'd just like to say that they really were a large contributor to that effort taking place in the success for USDA. Aside from that, the leaf pickup, it is a little late this year, a little later than normal, but we've had a long warden season, so the leaves are just now starting to fall, and I didn't want to pick them up too early and not get enough collection of leaves, so I hope people will bear with the timeframe, and we can get that done well for people. This week, only working with the BOT, the crew that's going to work with the bridge project next year, in correspondence with that, New York State Electric and Gas will be working on their water, or their gas line across both bridges, Elm Street and Main Street Bridge. With that, the contractor that's going to be supporting or fixing ICEX line is going to give a cost estimate on what it will take us to fix our water line on the Main Street Bridge, to pass it through the winter months, in the event we get high water or any ice jam in there, it doesn't rip it completely off the bridge and it's repaired at least through the winter months, to carry on next year's bridge project. That'll take place tomorrow, I believe, this week. The belt press, again, Greg, you mentioned that it's in place, it is in the building, waiting for contractors to give them some estimates to get a concrete foundation underneath it, so the unit will sit up and it won't rot sitting on the floor. An unforeseen event with Mr. Kissel's, you know, family, that'll just move that back a week, and that's not a problem, it's just, it's just going to take a little while, so hopefully mid-November we'll have that fully functioning and operational. That's really all I have right now, is there any, you got any questions?
I just want to say, I forgot to mention this, the riverbank looks really good, too, down on the corner.
Thank you.
The numbers look, the numbers look pretty good, too, for the amount of work that was done.
It was a phenomenal amount of work.
Yeah, that looks like it might help, too, with the future ice jams.
That was my intent.
Right.
I really believe that that will help that area and the residents that live on that street, and the residents up in the village, actually, if that ice can pass through there more freely, it's a good thing.
The riverbank, you're giving rid of that island out in the middle of the river with trees where that was clogging up the last ice jam we've got.
That's worth it.
Okay. Any other questions for Ian? Okay, correspondences, please.
Correspondence from James Tavisco Assembly, Republican leader thanking the village for their support of the property tax relief bill. Correspondence from Senator Little thanking the village for their correspondence regarding property tax relief. Correspondence from Williamson Law Book regarding price increase in software support contracts. Correspondence to Mr. Turner, NCCS Superintendent regarding Champlain Elementary School building. Correspondence from the flood zone stating they are renewing their liquor license. Correspondence from Champlain Fire District thanking the DPW Crew for correcting their driveway. Correspondence from EFC regarding New York State Wastewater Needs Survey. Correspondence from USDA thanking the village for use of our facilities during the recent rabies emergency response effort in Clinton County for raccoons. Correspondence from Clinton County Department of Personnel regarding recreation position description revisions. Sewer credit request from Hilda Rye.
Thank you. Any questions? Under Old Business, the Time Warner Cable franchise, which we were updated by Kim, so we don't, any further questions on that, anybody? Okay, and we still have the Cherry Street issue under Old Business, Native Best, and they did not come tonight, and the GSA meter, still ongoing, you knew of that? Okay, so New Business?
Doing the ironing.
New and exciting things. The 2007 election notice, please, if you could read that to us.
Whereas the next village election for the office of the Village of Champlain, New York will be held on March 18th, 2008, whereas Board of Trustees of said village must designate by resolution in public offices and publish offices which are to be filled at such election and the terms of where they're, then be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of this village have determined the following offices to be filled and to be voted thereupon with the terms of such offices respectfully needed as follows. Trustee term two years and trustee term two years. There be it further resolved that as required by Section 15-104-3A of the Village Election Law, notice said village election be given at least four months prior to said election date, and that the offices to be voted upon at said election be likewise included in said notice.
Thank you. Do we need to do anything further with that?
Yeah, you need to be a motion.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, to accept that? A motion. Kim?
Second.
Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to add? So in other words, there are two trustee positions open up for reelection, two-year terms, Steve and my position is up for running, and the vote for that will be March 18th. If anyone is interested in running for a position, you can stop by the village office. When do we start that date? Do you have that date? When they can pick up petitions? I believe it's right after the holidays.
January at some point, yeah.
In January, we'll let you know as we get closer to the specific date, and you can pick up petitions, and you need to have signatures, 50 signatures?
Minimum of 50, yes.
Minimum of 50 registered voters in order to run. So if we have a warm January and you're interested in running, I suggest you get your petition out early, because it always gets cold the week before. All right. Next, carpet runners for village office, you are all copied on that. Universe is the only person that does the pickup if we want to go with someone that's going to do all the cleaning and pickup and whatnot, and as you see, it's very expensive, and being a mother of six kids, I always look at the other option. So here we've included, my thoughts are, the biggest problem is obviously the boots that are coming in here, you know, the guys are out working, and obviously, we're not going to have them take their boots off at the door, that'd be a great idea if we could, but no. So a suggestion I have is to get a boot cleaner at both doors, you know, one of those nice bristly things that cleans off the sides of the boots and everything, and try and attempt that to help reduce some of the foot traffic there. If we do that option, then we can outright purchase rugs, and Sam's Club had the best price at three-by-fives for $18.67 each, and they are heavyweight, and they really last. I've not had any problem, I had them in my store previously, and they're in my home, so that gets lots of traffic, and they've held up quite nicely. So as you see, we've got a couple options here. If we go with purchasing of mats, we're looking at $112. The boot cleaner at each door, two of them, would be a total of $48. And if we went the extra mile and got a wet/dry shop vac for those days when the rug is absolutely soaking wet from, you know, people coming in and out the front door, we could purchase a wet/dry vac, which I'm sure, Ian, you would find helpful in the shop as well.
Yeah, yeah.
You know. So gave you three estimates on that, from Sears at $89.99, and Sam's at $98, and Lowe's at $89. So we're looking, if we were to purchase a shop vac, the boot cleaners and the rugs, we're looking at $250.46. If we rent these mats and they're picked up biweekly to be cleaned, it's a total of $767 annually. So, that's what we have, discussion, questions, we need to, because we've spent this money on this beautiful rug. UniFirst is the only person that does the pickup if we want to go with someone that's going to do all the cleaning and pickup and whatnot. And as you see, it's very expensive. And being a mother of six kids, I always look at the other option. So here we've included, my thoughts are, the biggest problem is obviously the boots that are coming in here. You know, the guys are out working and obviously we're not going to have them take their boots off at the door. That'd be a great idea if we could, but no. So a suggestion I have is to get a boot cleaner at both doors, you know, one of those nice bristly things that cleans off the sides of the boots and everything. And try and attempt that to help reduce some of the foot traffic there. If we do that option, then we can outright purchase rugs. And Sam's Club had the best price at three-by-fives for $18.67 each, and they are heavyweight. And they really last. I've not had any problem. I had them in my store previously and they're in my home, so that gets lots of traffic. And they've held up quite nicely. So as you see, we've got a couple options here. If we go with purchasing of mats, we're looking at $112. The boot cleaner at each door, two of them, would be a total of $48. And if we went the extra mile and got a wet/dry shop vac for those days when the rug is absolutely soaking wet from, you know, people coming in and out the front door, we could purchase a wet/dry vac, which I'm sure, Ian, you would find helpful in the shop as well.
Yeah, yeah.
You know. So gave you three estimates on that from Sears at $89.99 and Sam's at 98 and Lowe's at 89. So we're looking, if we were to purchase a shop vac, the boot cleaners and the rugs, we're looking at $250.46. If we rent these mats and they're picked up bi-weekly to be cleaned, it's a total of $767 annually. So that's what we have. Discussion, questions? We need to, because we've spent this money on this beautiful rug and you see the dirt traffic in, speaking with Juanita, and she does it quite often already, you know, both of them, they'll get the vacuum out and vacuum up as there's, you know, having dirt traffic. And they don't have a problem in doing that because we only have the cleaners come every other week.
It's already discarded.
Yeah. So we need to do something. Go for your own beautiful carpet.
Can I add this to your duties?
Vacuuming?
We've taken it out, you know, the other day I took it out. I mean, we've taken it out just to, you know, foresee excessive dirt or something coming in here.
They'd be all that in a lot.
If you get a shop vac, who's... okay. My first thing is, who's going to clean the rugs? Because they're going to have to be cleaned. You can't just shop vac them. They've got to be cleaned, they've got to be shampooed. Who's going to do that?
There are three-by-fives. The ones from UniFirst are 10-foot long, the longest they have are 10-foot. Three-by-fives, you're going to have probably five rugs in this area alone, which could possibly, I don't know what kind of rugs they are, but...
They're just like what you see here at the front, they're those big fat, they're three-by-five. My other question too is, do we want mats running the whole gamut through where there's no...
Well, your main traffic comes to the door and then from the back, from the back to the doors. I mean, to me, that would make the most logical sense is you're trying to cover as much of the carpet as we can, but...
So the UniFirst, is it UniFirst?
Yes.
They're 10-foot long?
Yeah, three-by-10.
They come and get them?
Yep.
They take the dirty?
Every two weeks.
Yep.
If they take the dirty, I think they replace it for another one.
They take them and they put new carpets down immediately.
And how many would that give us?
Well, we have...
Five. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Five three-by-tens, one three-by-five and a two-by-three Comfort Plus mat. And that was just put in front of the copier. They spent a lot of time standing there, so watermarks.
We might be able to eliminate that small one. And we did come up with a runner leftover carpet that we put next to Ian's desk, so we could probably do away with another one there.
Okay, so if we took out one of the three-by-tens, they're $5 apiece. That would drop that down to $20 and so 23, 24, 50.
That might have been the three-by-five on that one, Amy.
That you're getting rid of?
Next to Ian's desk.
Oh, I thought there was a 10-foot running there.
Um, I don't...
So then we're talking 26, 50 as opposed.
I don't remember now. It's been a while since it came.
No, I've cleaned those. Normally we clean these rugs once after they get the carpet. We actually had to physically pressure wash them down at the waste plant. They got that pressure washer. And in order to get that out, a vacuum cleaner would just take out this loose surface. Surface, no. We actually know that, we pressure washed them. And it was...
Personally, for the money, I know, I know it's quite a bit of money, but they're going to be done professionally. Personally, I do not think that our office staff should be cleaning the rugs. I say go with the UniFirst.
They look more professional. You're going to have clean rugs every, and originally he said every week they come and he said we could do it every two weeks for the same amount. He didn't recommend going any longer than that because the rugs would just get way too dirty looking.
You may find that in the winter time when it's extremely slushy, that it's going to need to be every week. I personally do not think that our office staff should be pressure washing and cleaning our rugs.
I guess the question comes up, what are we paying for a month's care for cleaning service?
$60.
I know, but what is included in that service?
Well, I, they pass the vacuum. I don't really think they do, they overexert themselves. I'm not insulting anybody, but that's a fact.
Yeah, I think it's definitely something we need to address.
I don't know any other communities in the area. I'm sure there's more than the ones we get, but we haven't really researched that, so...
Where would this come out of the budget? Either way we go.
I'm not sure.
Wouldn't that, shouldn't that be something that would, should be divided equally between the three accounts?
Probably not. It should just go under, I think it would probably go under the building. Office building. Maybe 16, 20 or 40, I can't remember what company that was, or 14, 90.
I just think if you've spent this kind of money on a good carpet, it would be foolish to not spend the money to get good runners with good cleaning. Because then you just, you might as well just put down cheap carpeting because the carpet's not going to last.
When I tried to price it up originally, I didn't look at Sam's, I was looking at the catalogs we had here. And the consolidated carpet, which is probably close to what UniFirst-type carpets are, were $200 to $250 for a carpet. So it sounded like pretty reasonable with the rental, you know, considering the initial purchase cost, but...
This is every year though? This is a recurring?
But this is a public office and if you wanted to stay looking like this, you need to pay for some of those things.
I know, I'm just concerned because we have been spending so much money on, you know, very needed items that, you know, we try getting to wipe our feet and doing some basics. I mean, a lot of this money is just brought in without any effort in clearing our feet before we enter the building.
You could still put the boot scrapers out, but I am not in favor of having our office staff doing this. I think it's going to be money well spent to have the rugs professionally done, have services that's going to come in, take them out, clean ones down.
How much is this being tracked in by our own staff?
Um, I'll just, can you disagree with that? Most of our guys will decide to come in.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to hear.
If our side, if our, if our employee staff comes in, they will come through my office and lick his office and say, everything. Heavy foot traffic, not unless I have a, I come in and out of here sometimes, but generally I always go through the back and something. So our guys don't hang, nobody really hangs out up here.
So what are you talking about coming through here? What is the traffic that comes through to the back?
No, there's, of course, and if we have contractors or vendors or anybody like that. Residents come in usually and then the girls will ask me if they want them back there or up here, depending on where that individual's concerned, whether it be in an open forum or maybe more private in the back, no, we don't. And throughout the day, there's, you know, it's not a substantial amount of people that traffic through here, but there is, you know. Let's say a third of the population would walk back to this.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just would like to get a grip on if there is any way that this is going to get reduced at all, the 29.50 per week. Heard a little bit of talk that there's a possibility that we'd be able to cut that a little bit.
It'll be every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
Every other week.
All right. So the amount, the number of carpets that we need, we're in agreement, is going to be 29.50 every two weeks.
I think we could probably get, if you wanted to get rid of the little one, we could just maybe get a, that's a small one, so we could get a mat for there. We could probably purchase one for there. And then like I said, we've got a piece of carpet that we put down next to Ian's desk. I don't remember if it's five or 10-foot that we measured there when he came up here. It seems to me it might be a five-foot.
Okay.
It's either five foot to the door or 10-foot. I, I'm sorry, I don't really, I don't remember.
All right. Any other questions? Comments?
$2 a day. And it's $2 a day for your carpet.
I think I agree with Kim. I think that's money well spent, you know, to protect this carpet that we put in here. And also, I'm a little uncomfortable with having your staff, our secretarial staff or administrative staff doing the cleaning here. I think we really need to look at what we're paying here every month for $60, but if we can narrow this down a little bit so that we can get a firm price on what it's going to be.
Well, we're just talking another month of traffic, you know.
I, one other comment that I, that I would like to make on the office staff doing it, those rugs are big, they're heavy, they're that fuzzy stuff on top, but they're solid rubber on the bottom. I move mine around at home. They're heavy, they're bulky and I would hate to see one of our girls get hurt.
Well, I wasn't referring to them picking them up to do that kind of cleaning, it was just the vacuum, which I had, you know, discussed with Juanita, she didn't care the vacuuming on it.
Well, you'd have to pick it up and clean it somewhere.
Eventually, I guess, yeah. A motion, what we want to do here?
I make a motion to, to go with UniFirst for the rental of the rugs and the replacement of them every two weeks.
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Charlie? Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Selford?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Nay.
Okay, passes. All right. Next, we have the Champlain Elementary property. As I said earlier, I met with them, with Mr. Turner, in discussion of the property. I also discussed with him, he made comment about the building, that he had a gentleman that was coming to look at it for a possibility of apartments, which would be absolutely wonderful. The guy didn't show up for the appointment though. And at that point, I said to him, you know, if for any reason he decides just to dump the building, we may be interested, and that's one of the reasons we'd like to discuss that tonight, on taking down that building. But there'd be a lot of work and researching and getting grants and getting assistance. We'd have to get the town on board as well. It would not be something we could undergo individually as a village, but I am more than willing to do the research and write the grants because I don't know how pretty soon. Because I think we have such an awesome opportunity, instead of watching that building just deteriorate in front of us. Obviously, if it becomes an apartment building, that'd be great, it'd be added income for the village, which we need, but instead of it just sitting there, you know, I envision so many things. Obviously, we could rent some of this space out. My thoughts are getting, you know, like contacting the dance folks or scenes down in Plattsburgh and having them bring up square dancing or ballroom dancing, because everything we have to do, we have to travel to Plattsburgh for, you know. And wouldn't it be nice if we had some of these things up here for our elderly population and for anybody, you know, so that you don't have to travel for those who don't have vehicles? I would love to have an after-school program where there's tons of grant money out there for our younger kids in the young teenage years, programs available out there. So there's so much alternative than to going home and flipping on the TV. So that's what I'm looking at with the school. And of course, you know, I told Mr. Turner, you know, it's just a dream, you know, and miracles of miracles to make it come true, but it'd be a lot of work and obviously something that we're not going to be able to have the funding for. But I am envisioning the ability to hire someone that would be the director, the program director for the building in order to, you know, keep the tenants, you know, what we're going to need to keep up the upkeep on that building, just the heat alone, but keep the programs going and people coming in with all the different activities. And if we do the shared services with everybody up here, you know, we might be able to make something really cool happen. But again, my thought is not an extra burden on the taxpayers, but grant, grant money out there to do this. The property, however, when they put in the playgrounds, my understanding is before my time, is that it was to be left to the community if anything were to happen to Champlain Elementary, when the parents group put in that playground. So Mr. Turner felt very receptive to that. So as far as the land, we just need an official, everybody, yeah, you're all cool with the land being left to us. And then we would be put on the school board's next agenda meeting next month, which will be November 6th. And then they would discuss the option there and the possibility of, at that point saying, yes, you can have that land and therefore can proceed with the skateboard grant. Of course, we've missed that deadline now, but there is another enrollment in the spring for that grant as well for the property. Regardless, it'd be nice to have that land, whether the skateboard ever comes to fruition or not, because again, that's going to be purely based on getting grant money. There's just a ton of money out there for that as well, especially for our community. We qualify so beautifully for that. And I've also asked him to leave us the baseball diamond soccer field because it's used by our youth group, you know?
Soccer field?
Yeah. So, and also he told me that if this gentleman ever comes through that's looking at the apartment building, he was very receptive to the idea of, yes, it would be open and usable for everybody to still have that. They've done it in the past. This is a company that comes in and buys schools specifically and refurbishes them into apartments. So they were very receptive on that. So, you know, I always ask for one, but then go for the next big step. That's just how I work, so. Comments, discussion, questions?
I had a little interaction with the athletic director and the school is still interested in the tennis courts. So that's something that would have to be factored in as far as the property goes because they do utilize those for the...
Are they? Because it looks like they've not been maintaining them at all.
That will have to, we'll have to work that out as part of this process. But I'm in favor. I'm a dreamer as well. To me, I envision a community center with that gym, to push people to go in the wintertime. But there is no way that we can afford to do this on our own. There's just no way. We couldn't even afford the heat, let alone the heat. What scares me, and I'll leave it, is the school having a fire sale where someone gets this at a very reasonable price. And we have notorious property owners in this village already that buy things very cheap and then we just sit there and rot. And then we get stuck with the property. So I think that should be part of our thought process, that we want to make sure that whoever that new owner is, that it's viable from the standpoint of our taxpayers getting stuck for the, an albatross like that that just sits there and rots. I don't know how much influence we would have on that, but it should be considered as part of the process.
The other thing that concerned me as well is Mr. Turner informed me that they have not budgeted to heat that building this winter.
That's correct.
Is it not the fifth year?
So it's going to receive some major damage. Has water been shut off to that building yet?
No, really, it's a boiler system. That's what they use to heat this area, so it's about...
They don't have the old radiator still in there? Those are all gone?
I don't personally have any.
No. No, it's just a side, a side...
Okay. So it's not anything that's going to crack?
It's about $8,000 if you count...
Your 10.
To heat it.
Your 10, yeah.
10, $8,000 to heat that.
Amy, on that school...
That'll change the value.
On that school property, where are you envisioning the skate park to be?
Right behind... Right behind where you have that little, it's not tetherball, whatever, that little dome that you throw the ball in, and it's kind of like a basketball hoop, but not really, and there's a basketball hoop, there's a good section of land.
Where the monkey barge used to be.
Yeah, and it runs straight down. There's a good chunk there. Obviously, with the skateboard park we're looking at, it's not going to be like Bailey Avenue. We don't have, you know, $250,000 for a skateboard park. The initial grant is only a $25,000 grant, which is going to get us a ramp to start, you know. And then each year, you can apply twice a year, and there's several other ones out there that are $25,000 increments, so you can keep adding on to it.
My concern, and Steve brought it up, was the tennis courts. With the library situated there, I would not want to see skateboard ramps right behind the library. I just don't think it would be
I mean, in the tennis courts.
Right.
Yeah.
I just don't think that that would be a good area. You have a lot of people that use the public library, young and old, that are going there. I just don't think that that would be a good place. And there are a lot of kids that still use those tennis courts.
Right.
I mean, they maybe aren't maintained as well as they could or should be, but they still do get a lot of use. But I just don't think that that would be a good place. I think if, if your dream of the skateboard park comes to be, then I think it needs to be more in the back.
And that's my original thought, and I, when the tennis court came into my thought, was when I walked into the tennis courts and walked around, and they're horrible, I mean, there's cracks, the weeds are growing up through, and my concern is becoming a danger. But when you looked at the place, it was perfect containment with the fencing and everything, if you just laid a new floor in there, and I don't want the tennis courts going either, I enjoy them very much.
But you do still see a lot of the kids there, when the tennis season starts, school, they're in there practicing. I mean, I used to see Gary and
I'm surprised that the school is in there, in the conditions and with liability issues. I was surprised.
Maybe a question to ask at the board meeting, see if repair of the tennis courts has been budgeted under this new, under this new referendum that was passed recently to repair some of
So, and we need a location for the skate park, is the problem, is if we use a riverbank park, we can't put any permanent structures in. So we're kind of stuck now, as far as our property, all the property we have is way out of town, which would serve no purpose.
Who would maintain all the property?
The crew, and I talked with Ian about it.
They have all they can do to keep up as it is.
Well, especially this summer, because we were down people. So.
I still think we should have some kind of summer help program, not to divert the discussion too much, but
It's a great idea.
I could see some college kids that would fit in well with what we need done during that time of year.
High school kids.
High school kids.
No, I wouldn't
Just lawn care. These high school kids with working papers, they're dying to get these jobs, you know.
They're going to take some supervision, but I still think, you know, you could do plenty of meetings.
Fine, anyway.
You know, right now, the baseball diamond gets mowed by parents, whoever are the coaches, they get out there and mow it.
In the industry.
Yeah, it's, you know, many times out there with the lawnmower before game.
So what do you need from us tonight on this, just endorsement on property?
Endorsement, so we will send a letter, a new letter to the school board to be put on the agenda, to have that discussion in front of the school board, and I am more than willing to go, and anyone else wants to come would be great support. So if I could have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we get on the docket for the school board, the building number six, to discuss property acquisition.
Second.
Are we going to require, flag me the second, first, second?
Discussion?
Are we requiring help?
Maybe that's a wrong choice of words for the motion. Investigate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I doubt they're going to make a decision at this meeting.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not ready to, I'm all in favor of you going to the meeting, Amy, but I don't feel that I'm ready to make a decision right now that says, yeah, let's get it. Because I think there's, there's too much that still needs to be looked into, liability-wise, you know, maintenance-wise.
I think it's just, I should have worried it, if you don't mind me changing it, to say, to investigate the feasibility of which acquiring the property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, the bylaws for the joint use program. Did everybody get, read those through? This is just typical, everyone needs their bylaws, they've written them up, they file basically how the county has their setup. So I need a motion to accept their bylaws, please.
Make the motion, accept the bylaws for the joint use, please.
Thank you, Greg, a second?
Second.
Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, and adding one item on, there was information that came through on, it was an email copy to us all, from Griffiths concerning Nisek's lighting in the new park, the new homing house development.
Horizon Heights?
Yes. Now, is this, question on this, do we need to make a motion on this? Is this something that is just going to happen?
For the new streetlights?
Yes. Do we have conversation on the amount? They have here three anchor-based poles, lighting and additional delivery and maintenance will be approximately 1171. This will not include electric supply cost.
Correct.
So this is just delivery and maintenance, are they talking annual maintenance fee?
Correct. That is a fee that, that we pay for those, we pay a fee for every telephone light pole, excuse me, or streetlight that we have in our, we pay for the electric, we pay a maintenance cost and a delivery cost, the delivery to get that electrical power to that one, and that's what that one consists of.
So that does not include electricity?
Correct.
So for that
Which is
Development,
Right.
It's going to be 1,100 plus electricity?
Right.
And there's really no room for discussion on this expense? Correct?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
The type of pole that's being used, that was requested to be used, was is aluminum pole and vice, a wooden telephone pole for power供电. That's the only allowable variance you really have. The aluminum pole, my notes are in my office, but it's approximately $25 a month, and for all three poles. And the other poles are maybe $10, the timber pole. So there's about a $20 savings, $20 difference between aluminum pole vice timber pole.
Wait, you just said, say it again?
The wooden pole up for
You said $25 versus $10.
Right, my numbers are, I don't know exactly what the word is, so I was just saying, there's approximately a $20 difference between an aluminum pole vice a timber pole.
Per pole?
Correct.
Okay.
Timber pole. We went with the aluminum pole, now, this, the mayor and I had this discussion along with Horizon Heights, Greg Fleming. And Nisek. We decided, we had thought about the aluminum pole would be more aesthetically pleasing for that new Horizon development vice a timber pole.
But wait, timbers are not the entire village.
Correct. So the variant, the changes that could be made is if, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure our board here this evening can make a decision, aluminum vice timber, or does that have to be the planning board? I'm not sure how that works. It's two different things. So if the decision is made this evening to go with the timber pole, that's a simple email, and I can send that out, and we can change that from aluminum poles, from the concrete base, to in-place wooden pole. And the price will come down, but we're still going to pay for a maintenance fee, we're still going to pay alumina, luminaire fee, delivery fee, you still have to pay for the cobra head that reaches out over the road, that you have to pay for. I mean, so you have to pay for everything, there's only a small fraction of the cost difference between the timber pole and the wooden pole.
If it's not a small fraction, it's $60 a month, times 12 months, times 18 years.
Years, yeah.
That's not so small.
Well, I save $275 a year per base if we make a new building. Can you believe that? They charge us $275 for a concrete base per light, a year. I don't check that. For the concrete months, but
I'd just like to interject, though, that there should be a specification in what was approved by the planning board on the plaque as to what those would be consistent of.
I'm not sure if it's set aluminum or timber, I'm not sure if it's specified that.
Right, Fleming was going to have the lights installed originally, they were going to do the whole nine yards.
Right.
However, if Mr. Fleming had the lights installed, and then the streets and everything was then turned over to us, we would then incur that bill that he had paid to have it installed. So, and then we would just wind up, and he wanted to put in colonial ones, which are much more expensive than traditional
They're not very affordable.
Yeah, they are, and they actually have a lower luminance than the current ones. The way they designed the plan, and then they changed it to the open squirrel ditches, and they got rid of the sidewalks and stuff, and when they opened squirrel ditch that project, it made their streetlights come back up out the street, otherwise it'd be right in the ditch. So that's why we now have to go to a different pole with a long aluminum, what they call a cobra head type arm, which you see on all these streets out here. A timber pole is extremely fast and easy, and Nisek will come up, and just auger a hole and slap the timber pole in there, hook up the power and the cobra head, and then they move on. The aluminum poles are more challenging for us at first, because we have to have a concrete base designed specifically off Nisek's blueprint pattern, and it has to be approved by Nisek, and it has to be set in the ground, and then they bolt their light to it. So if we pour one, if it doesn't meet their specification or inspection, then No.
So why isn't a screw-type base acceptable instead of a concrete base? Did that ever come up as part of the discussion?
I'm not
Ross's point uses an auger-type base that is screwed into the ground, the same way you would put an anchor in the ground, and that's what they mount their aluminum poles to.
I'm not sure.
Do we have to decide on that tonight? Can we investigate this more? I mean, I'd like to research this a little bit if I could.
Well, I had Nisek up there at Horizon Heights, specifically, the guy that deals with contracts. And that's Jerry Griffiths, I think, who the even keeps
Correct.
Yes. He is the guy that makes the final decision, whatever way we decide, he is the guy that I will correspond to. And he specifically stated if it's aluminum pole, it's the concrete base, or timber pole, it's just in place, is what they call it. And just auger holes, stick it in there, pack the dirt around it, and move on.
And we need to do that before the ground freezes as well?
Right, well, and the longer, and the longer we take it, it just
Well, we still tie, ground won't freeze till January, not until
Steve, I never heard of that.
That's what Ross's point uses, Ross's point has a screw-type base.
But they don't go through Nisek?
That's correct.
So they may have a, they have a little more liberty when it comes to what type of base they want to make. We, this is mandated by Nisek.
Wendy, can you check to see if, just to confirm that we can make this decision versus the planning board? If the planning board needs to make this decision, and then, you know, obviously, we can always give the planning board a recommendation, correct? How we feel?
Yes.
So we can look into it further, and we'll add this on to next one, so check it again if you could continue that on.
Can I ask one question?
Go under old business.
No, that's fine, but, well, I need to, I don't need a final answer, but I need to respond back to Mr. Griffiths, otherwise the wheels are still turning when we speak. So what I don't want them to do is show up and say, hey, where's the concrete base, I got the poles.
Oh.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to put ourselves into the
My personal opinion, you probably already know, but, I mean, the whole village is
Timber pole.
Timber, it's done fine by us. And who knows how many houses are really going to come to fruition here?
Forty, forty-five, that's the
I understand the plan.
Right.
I'm talking reality, as we have how many homes up for sale in our village right now, and we're talking an expensive 1,200 minimum already
For three lights.
For three lights, for one house, in a little field. Not to be negative or skeptical, but, I mean, this is a lot of money, and we are in position now where we need so many things in this village that need to be done, that need to be addressed. That's my gut on this.
When are they planning on putting these in?
He's waiting for an answer to
Can you tell them that we're going to do further research on it, or we're going to have further board
Well, that's what, that's what I'm thinking. If that's what we're going to do, then I'll, I will correspond with them again, first thing in the morning, and just say,
I know.
Let's, let's just hold on.
Can we do a temporary, you know, if we get some research in the next week, and we email folks, letting them know the information, and then we can, you know, if they need to proceed, is this something that's holding up the continuation of this project?
Or we have
No, no, Mr. Fleming has already placed a house, if you've had a chance to
Right, right.
It's a beautiful house.
Has it been sold?
Uh, no, that's his, that's the model home, and then that will be his tool to further that development. Pretty interesting process, I was up there personally, watched it, it's, actually, that'll be, it'll be a really nice home. It's got a beautiful basement, it's all radiated heated, it's a lot of technology and stuff in the home.
So in actuality, if we held off until the November board meeting?
We'll be okay.
Correct.
Alright.
Absolutely.
So tell them we will definitely have an answer barring unforeseen major complications.
When I send out my correspondence, I'll CC it all, and then when he responds, hopefully, he'll just forward or reply all. And if he doesn't, then I'll just forward the information on it, so we're all
Can you do that? I'll have to ask you later. I never figured that out on the computer yet. Sorry. Technologically inclined here. Alright, level we have left, folks?
Sewer credit.
Oh, sewer credit, thank you very much. Item 10, Hilda Rye, she had a running toilet that they were not aware of, based on, she's been going through a lot, obviously, this summer, and she is looking for a one-time credit, and who has that right in front of them for the round? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Sure.
I make a motion that we give Mrs. Rye a one-time credit of 118.16 on her sewer.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? You have one other item, Greg? Did we cover it?
Uh, figure, figure 10.
Oh, yeah, we got
Five.
Yep. Okay. Back to the agenda, alright, and I am looking for a motion for, I guess I make the motion, go into the second session, in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.